So I'm gonna go ahead and open the Granberry City Council. It's our regular meeting. We've had four in a row, it looks like, special meetings, I think. But this is our regular meeting. It is 6:00 PM. It's Tuesday, September the 16th, 2015. We are at Granberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street in Granberry, Texas. And I do want to remind you that you can watch this on www.granberry.org/live, either live tonight, or you can pick us up on the YouTube channel, our City of Granberry YouTube channel, if you prefer to watch it at a later time. So I'm gonna go ahead and we will, we've now been called to order, and we'll move right on to number two, which is the invocation. I'll ask Reverend Terry Ins, Reverend Ins, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wadley. Reverend Ins, to just come to the podium. We will stand, and then we will continue standing for the pledges. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Would you bow with me, please? Our Father, we thank you for this day. We recognize you as the Creator and Sustainer of life, and you have given us this day, a day to serve you, a day to honor you, a day to live for you, and we thank you for that. And we come to this meeting with many competing thoughts and desires on our hearts, things that we have experienced this day, joyful things, hard things, difficult things, and weighty matters. And at this time, we also come to you with the concerns of our community before us and before you. And we thank you that amidst all these things, that you have given us this opportunity to serve you by caring for the concerns of this community. We thank you that you have created government for that purpose. The government is your servant to care for your created people. And we thank you for this branch of your government, our city council leaders, our mayor and our councilmen, and how they serve you and serve you well in caring for us. And we pray that in all the things that are competing for attention in their minds and hearts, both personally and for our city, would you give them attention this day to the things that will serve us the best? Would you give them knowledge? Would you give them an understanding of the facts about the decisions that they have to be, that they have to make? And along with those facts, would you give them wisdom and discernment and clarity about the decisions that will be best for our community and care best for us? And as they make these decisions, would you give them unity and harmony, not only amongst themselves, but in a way that will create unity and harmony in our community as well? Father, we thank you that they serve us well. Would you give them your discernment this day? And might you be honored by their attention to caring for us in our community? We pray these things, and trusting them to you for your honor and for your glory. We pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Now if you'll join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I declare the need to be Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. May be seated. We're gonna move right to our proclamations, presentation. We have two proclamations tonight. Start tonight with the proclamation for domestic violence. If you, ladies and gentlemen from Mission Granberry, would come up, please? Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and have you hold the proclamation here. I will read the proclamation. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of every age, background, and circumstance; and whereas each year more than 10 million Americans experience domestic violence, with one in four women and one in nine men facing severe intimate partner violence in their lifetime; and whereas on an average day more than 20,000 calls are made to domestic violence hotlines nationwide; and last year, Mission Granberry answered 770 calls from local survivors; and whereas Mission Granberry provides safe shelter, counseling, and support for women, men, and children serving more than 200 survivors in the past year; and whereas ending domestic violence requires awareness, prevention, and the united effort of individuals, family, and the entire community; now therefore I, Jim Jarrett, Mayor of the City of Granberry, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I call on all residents to stand with survivors, support the work of advocates and service providers, and take part in building a safer, stronger Granberry. Given under my hand and seal of the City of Granberry on the 16th day of September 2025, Jim Jarrett, Mayor. Thank you, ladies, for coming up. And would you like to say something?
Okay, absolutely. I just wanna thank Granberry for the support that they continuously give to Mission Granberry. We appreciate you guys.
We certainly appreciate you. Hold that up. Yeah, picture? And we now have a proclamation for the monarch butterfly. So anyone who doesn't have orange on, or everyone who does have orange, please come forward. Make sure you bring the small monarchs. Absolutely, absolutely. We're both outnumbered, I think. Would you want the picture now? This is great. Now go ahead and read the official proclamation. Excuse me. Whereas the monarch butterfly is the Texas State Insec and is known as the ambassador of the Americas for its multi-generation 3,000-mile migration across Canada, the United States, and Mexico; and whereas thousands of monarch butterflies travel through Texas on their fall journey south to Mexico, stopping in Granberry's green spaces to show their brilliant orange and black wings as they search for nectar-rich flowers; and whereas researchers are trying to determine why the monarch butterfly's population is sharply declining, possibly due to a loss of habitat; and whereas to raise awareness of the importance of creating monarch butterfly habitats, the Lake Granberry Master Gardeners maintain a demonstration garden to offer educational classes and host a yearly outreach to encourage the community to plant milkweed and nectar plants in preparation of the monarch butterfly migration through Granberry and Hood County. So now therefore I, Jim Jarrett, Mayor of the City of Granberry, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Monarch Butterfly Migration Month in Granberry, and encourage all residents and citizens to join the Lake Granberry Master Gardeners in celebrating the culmination of a year-long effort to sustain adult monarch butterflies while on their migration through Granberry and Hood County. It's given under my hand and the seal of the City of Granberry on the 16th day of August 2025. Jim Jarrett, Mayor, thank you. I'm so glad to see you guys again.
Thank you.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council. We do appreciate your support in this. This is a very important thing that we do every year, and in our effort to put Granberry on the map as the place in North Texas to come and celebrate the annual migration of monarch butterflies. We, as Master Gardeners, work on this year-round by romancing the monarch butterfly all year, and we thank you, the city and the community, for supporting our efforts. And come to our party. On April, October 4th, the first Saturday in October, we host a Romancing the Monarch Butterfly Festival. It's free. Come to the Master Gardeners' demonstration garden, and we'll be releasing 200 live butterflies and celebrating their annual migration. Thank you.
Thank you. And we appreciate all that you do. Thank you. Oh, you show your colors? Sorry. That's good. Cover the face. That'll be good. We may make a little bit light of the habitat, preserving the habitat, but I assure you that preserving habitats where the pollination occurs is absolutely necessary in all agriculture environments, and certainly in this one. So let's move now to public comments on agenda items for non-public hearing agenda items. And since there is no public hearing tonight, it's all open. Anyone? Okay. I'll not bore you with how long you can speak. Let's go to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine or previously discussed items and will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the city council wish to discuss any item, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. Council, do we have anything that you would like to take off the consent?
Mayor, I'd like to take item 6.3 off the consent agenda.
Mr. Rodriguez, as requested, we take item 6.3, consider approving the statement of work renewal with Buchanan Technologies as the City of Granberry's current managed service provider, MSP. And we'll get to that as the first deliberation agenda, unless someone else wants to take anything else off. No? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda except for item 6.3?
So moved.
Mr. Overdue? Mr. Wadley makes the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That will pass 6-0. Okay. Now let's go to item number 6.3 as a deliberation item. And we're gonna consider approving agreement, or consider approving the statement of work renewal with Buchanan Technologies as the City of Granberry's current managed service provider for an amount not to exceed $250,000 and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Mr. Rodriguez, do you have some specifics that you'd like us to cover first?
Yeah, I just wanted to address the city staff, if possible. Chris, is this gonna be something that you're gonna address, or is this something that somebody else is gonna address?
Chris Collins is making his way up now.
Okay. Chris, while you're making your way up, I was just, are we locked into, based on this amendment, are we locked into a three-year agreement with this company?
Correct. So it's, when you say locked in, so we still have our master service agreement. This is just updating the pricing associated with us going forward. The master service agreement, and that's one of the reasons why I originally went with this vendor, is we just have to give them notice of 90 days if we want to terminate.
Okay.
And we could terminate this agreement if the services were not on par. Typically, with these organizations, it's a lot longer than that, and so...
No, that was just one of my questions, is because I'm familiar with these type of services, and usually they have, they start out with an agreement, an initial agreement, and then they have option years. And I think you just answered my question. So it's a 90-day lead time for them to give notice.
Correct. I believe that's the longest. I actually think it's shorter than that, but I believe it's, I would say 90 days comfortably.
Okay.
I think it's 30 days, honestly. Because initially, when we did this agreement, if the company wasn't delivering, I was gonna move to the next option. But confidently, I can say 90 days, which would allow for transition to a new provider.
Thank you. That answers all my questions, Mayor.
Very good. Others discussion or questions? Okay. So do I hear a motion to approve the statement of work renewal with Buchanan Technologies as the City of Granberry's current managed service provider for an amount not to exceed $250,000 and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement?
So moved.
Mr. Rodriguez makes the motion?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays, so that will pass 6-0. And I appreciate Mr. Rodriguez asking that question on the consent agenda. I think it's always good, because if you go through the consent agenda, even tonight, we, with this $250,000, also approved another $150,000 or $200,000 for various pieces of equipment and changes that are made. I think it's always good to keep this out in front. So thank you, sir. Moving to the deliberation agenda. Consider approving a recommendation from the Granberry Cultural Arts Commission to authorize the "Out-of-the-Box Utility Box Art Wrapping Program" Artist Selection by Rebecca Zook, Vibrance. And that will be located at box location at State Highway 144 and Farm to Market 51. And that location has been accepted and approved by TaxDOT. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. At this time, I'll turn it over to our director, Tammy Dooley, for Visit Granberry.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, Mr. City Manager. And thank you, Mayor. You did a great job on presenting that, just like that. That is, in short, what we're here tonight. We're here to ask you to consider approving a recommendation from the Granberry Cultural Arts Commission. And our chair, Mariella Riley, is in the audience tonight and available to answer any questions you may have. This is the third box that we have brought to you. It is by artist Rebecca Zook. And in your packets, we have a picture of the painting Vibrance, is the name of it. Thank you for showing that. It's beautiful. The box location is on State Highway 144 and FM 51. This has been accepted and approved by TaxDOT. And just to remind everyone, the Granberry Cultural Arts Commission continues in its efforts to enhance the community through the Utility Box Art Project. This program transforms select utility boxes into works of public art by wrapping them with a vinyl reproduction created by local artists. Each wrap is expected to last approximately two to three years. This particular box is sponsored by Janice and Ken Dickinson. And staff recommends approval of the third "Out-of-the-Box Utility Art Project" in the spirit of showcasing Granberry's growing art, culture, and tourism appeal. The project is intended for the enjoyment of both our residents and visitors alike in Granberry and Hood County, Texas, and creates opportunities for artists to showcase their work in Granberry. Thank you.
Tammy? State Highway 144 and FM 51, is that Comet Cleaners?
Yes, sir.
I thought that was mine.
I think yours is on the loop by going to the police station, I believe, across from Mesquite.
Oh, now I understand. Okay.
If I'm remembering.
My mistake.
There is actually an attachment with pictures of the box locations. And you are correct, it is the road by Comet Cleaners. So, not yours.
This one?
Yes, this one.
Right. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor?
No, you can't have that spot. Go ahead. Yes.
Tammy, we have, we have, you said we've done three of them, right?
Yes, sir.
Can you remind us which ones have been done already? Or do you know?
The locations or the...
Zero have been done?
Yes. There have been three. One is the location across from Mesquite Pit. One is the one you're considering tonight. And then there is one in front of the conference center, and they're all three in separate stages. One is getting ready to appear. That is the mayor's on the loop there. One is still in some negotiations with our city attorney. And this one we bring before you tonight.
So what's the estimated timeframe to get? I know it's estimate timeframe to get all the boxes completed.
Well, we do not know that yet. Our issue that we're working on right now is getting more artists to submit. We have a cafe call for artists that, where artists go in and submit their entry to be selected. So we're a little light on that right now. So we are, as a commission, we are talking to art groups and encouraging them to enter. And it can be any artist. It does not have to be a professional or anything like that. So right now, that's what we're a little light on. We have a few sponsors, potential sponsors, in the pipeline. And to remind you, the, it is a pass-through cost. So the sponsor sponsors the box, the artist gets a $250 stipend, and then the rest of the money goes to pay for the wrap itself. And so we really think, you know, it's taken us a minute to get our bearings with the program. And I think that this one came to you pretty quick overall. And I think moving forward, it'll be quicker, and you'll get more and more coming.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, we're calling all artists, I guess. We can do that from the podium.
Yes.
Help you out. So Mayor, I guess if you can help them out on the live that we're looking for submissions.
We are, and also sponsors.
And sponsors.
And just contact a commission member to, we have a wonderful packet with all the information, so you too can be a sponsor.
So where do they, like, these sponsors and these artists, what information can you provide here and now for them to submit or to sponsor?
They can go to the Granberry Arts website, which is on the Visit Granberry site, and they can do their artist's submission. They can sponsor. They can also pick up complete packets at Visit Granberry, and all the commission members have them as well. They can also reach out to any of us, and we will email them a packet.
All right. Thank you.
Other discussion, questions for Ms. Dooley? No? Nope? Do I hear a motion to approve a recommendation from Granberry's Cultural Arts Commission to authorize the "Out-of-the-Box Utility Box Art Wrapping Program" Artist Selection by Rebecca Zook, Vibrance? And it'll be located at box location is SH 144 and Farm Road 51, Farm to Market 51, which has been accepted and approved by TaxDOT. That's one of the things that Tammy forgot to mention, is that the timing on this also requires us to work with TaxDOT.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Wadley makes a motion. It's seconded by Mr. Overdue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays, that will pass 6-0. Thank you. Thank you both. Appreciate this.
Thank you.
And I agree with you. Once you get one or two up, you're gonna have more people wanting to put those up. There'll be a monarch on one soon. It doesn't have to be a professional artist. We can get the right rendering. Okay. Let's move to 7.2. Consider approving agreement between the City of Granberry and the Granberry Volunteer Fire Department. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. We're happy to present this tonight. Michael and I have been dreaming of this day for about eight years. So various impediments along the way, but I think we finally got a great agreement, and I feel like the fire department has supported it as well. So I'll turn it over to Michael Ross, our deputy city manager, to walk us through this project.
Thank you. Yes, it has taken a little while, but we are pleased to bring this to you this evening. It's always a good idea when you have setups like this, where you'll have a municipality, and in this case, it's a 501(c)(3) volunteer fire department. You want to clearly spell out what the volunteer fire department is providing and what the city is providing to the volunteer fire department, those tax dollars being spent and what they're going towards, and to clearly spell that out. And that's what we tried to do here in the services they provide so well, and what the city provides in apparatus and bunker gear and everything else they need to do their jobs right. And so we're pleased to bring this forward this evening, this agreement, and ask that you authorize the city manager to sign it. Happy to answer any questions. And yes, we did work with Matt, the fire chief, and the volunteer fire department through this process. We appreciate their help.
Mr. Overdue? No? I have no questions up here. So do I hear a motion to approve the agreement between the City of Granberry and the Granberry Volunteer Fire Department?
So moved.
Mr. Corrigan makes the motion?
Second.
Mr. Overdue makes the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That will be passed, all opposed, say nay. I hear no nays, that will be passed 6-0. And before we break here, gentlemen, I am, I got so excited about the monarch butterflies here. I did not go to the issuing encouraging statements. Thank you, Ms. Burwell. I see you back there, and I thought, ah, I know who did this for us. Thank you. Mr. Kaufman?
So I guess last week, I received a call from an individual citizen, to be left unnamed. But their family member had had two of our inspectors go to their house and knock on the door and say, "We need to inspect your hot water heater." She had hired a plumber. I found out all this story this morning, finally. She had hired a plumber to come and replace her hot water heater sometime back, and our inspection department was reviewing projects that had pulled permits that had never had a final inspection. And so she didn't know the city inspectors were coming her way. And so, but they visited with her, and they said that she was displaying symptoms of carbon monoxide poisoning. They went in and inspected the hot water heater, and it was not vented properly as required when the installation. And so they turned off the hot water heater and called the plumber and have him come out and fix it. Since that time, last week, they have met with all the plumbers that are pulling permits to install hot water heaters and have met with them personally in our building here and reviewed with them the requirements for them to call and ask for a final inspection once they install the hot water heater, and to let the citizen know that they're coming. We would never want someone to be portrayed as a inspector to go to someone's house and go knock on the door without the homeowner knowing, and then them let them in. And who knows what kind of nefarious action could take place? So in this situation, we had our two guys that we always travel in two when we do a home residence where someone's living there, to go in and do the inspection. And so that's always a good sign. If you see two people with a city uniform inside a city marked truck, it's a good indication that's for real. But still, we want the citizens to be careful about what they do. But in this situation, they probably saved this lady's life. So she was carbon monoxide, you know? And who would've known? But it was because someone at City Hall in the permitting department was reviewing the permits pulled from the previous day or two, or whenever it was, and said, "This one's never had a final inspection. We need to go see." Instead of letting it go, they went and did their job. So wow, what a deal. Instead of letting it go, they went and did their job, so wow, what a deal. And so I just want to shout out for them. This is just an example of what goes on here. There's always things going on, and we're all about health and safety, and so whether it's the police department, the inspection department, or any other department, we're always about the health and safety of our citizens, so anyway, that's what I've got to share tonight with y'all, so thank y'all.
Thank you. Counsel? Other actions? I know we have many, many good things that take place. I think we're all numb from the series of meetings that we've had over the last 30 days. Nothing else? Okay, thank you for sharing that, Mr. Kaufman, I appreciate it. Now I'm gonna move to item number eight, and that will be executive session. I now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened into open session, all members are present. City Council will now go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections, 551071, consultation with attorney pending or contemplate litigation, 551072, deliberation regarding real property, and 551087, deliberation regarding an economic development negotiation. We are now in executive session. It is now 9:15, it's time for us to reconvene, and now declare that the Granbury City Council reconvenes into open session, there was no action taken in closed session, all council members are present. Gentlemen, any other action?
Mayor.
Mr. Wadley.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager and/or his designees to meet with the Hood County Commissioners Court to discuss and advance the City of Granbury's economic development model and associated policies.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Overdear, seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays, that motion will pass 6-0. Mr. Wadley, anything else?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a development agreement with HLAS Granbury LLC.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That motion will pass 6-0. Others?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute necessary easements for the Highway 377 breakout project.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez, second to the motion? No discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That will pass 6-0. Mr. Wadley? Nothing else? Any other, any other business? Okay. There being no further business, I announce the meeting adjourned, we're out of here.